Through to Counsel Hughes. What we have done is we've provided a recommendation for 290, well, for what's currently included in the base budget, which recognizes our ability to accommodate incremental, minor incremental growth. And then with fingers crossed, hope to return to post-secondary and relatively conventional transit service in September of 2021. So what is currently included in the base budget is what we feel is an appropriate level of service given current fiscal reality and reduced ridership based on the current pandemic scenario.
So the increased potential, so it had it here, and I think it was in the recommended, and maybe is that we could actually increase the service level further. Is that right?
There are options in there to increase the amount of money that we would spend for contract hours, therefore service hours available to the public. There is, it's easy to present increased expenses. It's very difficult to project increased revenues.
Counsel Hughes, you need to look in the service level adjustment document. It's in there. Yeah, under commuter and transit local services. No, yeah, there's a business case in there that talks about the pre-COVID numbers. And then there's three scenarios. And Artur, just to be clear, you're proposing the scenario one, which is a $7.4 million subsidy. Is that correct? That's in the budget?
That's currently in the budget. That's correct.
Okay. And then so Counsel Hughes, you have an option of two or three, which is increasing hours. And then I think the max it goes up to is about a $300,000, 385 addition to the budget. Okay, I see the numbers here. Yeah, there you go. So the 7.4 million estimated subsidies, that's already in, is what I'm hearing. And it's just about whether or not we want to move another 300,000 further. Yeah, I'm seeing nods. Okay, so my, I guess my question is, I know you said you're recommending this. Do we see from the current rate of ridership as of now that scenario two, three, or four would be justified or needed? Or what would be the argument to move it up, other than just we are offering more service? But has there been a demand for this?
Not from a wholesale perspective, as through to Counsel Hughes, sorry. Indeed, we did have a number of customer complaints when we made our initial transfer at approximately these hours that we're recommending. We did have some initial customer complaints, but that was exaggerated by the fact that we shifted the transit center from Village to Nagy. Currently, we are experiencing no more customer complaints than we would traditionally receive. Therefore, we believe that the service we're recommending is well within our service levels and current ridership expectations. Obviously, the more hours available, the better the service, the happier the customers will be. But whether it warrants the increasing costs, it is our recommendation that it does not.
And how has the ridership been in the past couple of months? Has it increased at all? Like, I would assume it would have increased a bit in September, just because summer break was over and more people were coming into work. But have we seen September to now, has there been any further increases in ridership?
There was a small bump at the beginning of September, but we're still running around 80% less than traditional.
And so in the past two months, though, we really haven't seen an additional bump, right?
Sorry, yes, no additional, right? There was a small bump, an increase at the beginning. Apparently, 12% of post-secondary students are on campus. So some of those people were riding our buses, so they started again. But nothing to warrant increasing over and above what we've recommended.
The other thing is Groot Road Bridge here is going to be done soon. So we had additional costs to mitigate around the fact that we couldn't go over Groot Road Bridge. Have we reduced these costs for this year? And do you know, like, is there any good news from that that we have in the plan?
There's definitely good news, because being able to go back on Groot Road is a much more convenient route for those that access university, et cetera. It opened, I think, last weekend. Unfortunately, there's still a bunch of pending closures for various deficiencies and whatnot on the contract. So all transit providers have committed to returning to use, to scheduling its use November 29th. I'm not aware of any cost savings that we had by virtue of the bridge shutdown. And I should remind Counsel that our move to Nagy was our staff restructured the routes to accommodate what would have been a $1.5 million increase in extending our services to Nagy as a primary transit center. So that's already been absorbed within the restructure that we've done.
I just thought that we had to pay more for the rerouting to detour around for the past couple of years. Like, I feel like it came to Counsel for extra money, but I might have been wrong. I mean, maybe, maybe we didn't.
I'm not aware of that, and I don't believe any of my transit cohorts on, on screen now were here either, so.
It might have just happened in my mind. And then, and then I've just translated into being reality. But we definitely did have the detours. So that is, so the good news for the public, oh, for them that are currently watching, is that we have just a couple more weeks. And then we're actually going to be able to go over that Groot Road Bridge for real. And those detours and the issues of trying to connect with the LRT constantly will now be a thing of the past for people who do want to go to university, which is excellent for people who. My understanding is that there's going to be more people going to the U of A as of January. They aren't opening up all of the schedules, but they are opening up more classes, is my understanding. So there might be opportunity for a bit more ridership with that. Okay, that was it for questions. Oh, one more, if that's okay, Mayor Hearn.
Yeah.
Is the on-demand service, how is that going?
I'll ask Artur to address that. Thank you.
Yes, it's doing really well, considering the COVID issue. We're carrying approximately 900 passengers per month since it started, and it seems, the ridership seems to have leveled off. We're pretty happy with it. The customers are, seem to be pretty happy with it. We've gotten over any difficult bumps at the very beginning, where customers were having some difficulty planning their trips. We've managed to overcome all of those obstacles and issues and concerns, and ridership is stable. And our customers seem to be pretty happy with it.
Okay, because there was a lot of complaints at the beginning, like you said, but that seems to have leveled off or decreased significantly, I'm hoping?
Yes, it has. Yes, many customers, you know, it's, it's brand new, so there was a little bit of apprehension, a little bit of fear in using the app. Our customer service staff was terrific. They literally took, you know, I'd say hundreds of calls just to help customers through the process and show them how to use the app. And ever since then, that first month was difficult, but ever since, it's been.
Equipment charge usage rates, $171,000. An increase in transfer transfers to re reserve due to an increase in public work replacement reserve for vacuum truck, $78,000. A decrease in transit from operations due to elimination of interdepartmental transfers with service, $320,000. No additional resources are being recommended in this functionary for 2021. In summary, for 2021, Public Works and Transit is proposing an overall net increase of 1,965,000 over 2020. Key influencers are primarily related to decreased transit revenue due to COVID-19 and updated equipment charge usage rates. This concludes my Public Works and Transit presentation.
That was fast. All right, who do we have answering questions? I saw Tori there, Anthony's here. Okay, good. Questions, Council? Go ahead, Counsel Hughes.
Thank you. Okay, I haven't used this for a very long time. Okay, so with the transit, the suggestion was or recommendation from the committee was to bring it back here to make a decision. So we're looking at increasing taxes at this moment to actually accommodate. This is what I'm looking at, right? Because if we if we take any of the suggestions, whether it's 200 or 1.2, the taxes are going up as soon as we agree to that, right? Because there's no other funding coming as a source for this. So can we, I wasn't there for that meeting, so I'm just gonna ask for your patience. Is which, what are we expecting the ridership to be and which one of these levels were you recommending that we actually move forward with?
I'm going to turn that over to Anthony or to Ator to speak on how they project their transit ridership to go over from 2020 to 2021.
Okay, thank you.
Through to Counsel Hughes, what we have done is we've provided a recommendation for 290, well, for what's currently included in the base budget, which recognizes our ability to accommodate incremental, minor incremental growth. And then with fingers crossed, hope to return to post-secondary and relatively conventional transit service in September of 2021. So what is currently included in the base budget is what we feel is a appropriate level of service, given current fiscal reality and reduced ridership based on the current pandemic scenario.
So the increased potential, so it had it here and I think it was in the recommended and maybe is that we could actually increase the service level further, is that right?
There are options in there to increase the amount of money that we would spend for contract hours, therefore service hours available to the public. There is, it's easy to present increased expenses. It's very difficult to to project increased revenues.
Counsel Hughes, you need to look in the service level adjustment document. It's in there. Yeah, under commuter and transit local services. No, yeah, there's a business case in there that talks about the pre-COVID numbers and then there's three scenarios and, or try just to be clear, you're proposing the scenario one, which is a $7.4 million subsidy. Is that correct? That's in the budget?
That's currently in the budget. That's correct.
Okay, and then so Counsel Hughes, you have an option of two or three, which is increasing hours. And then I think the max it goes up to is about a $300,000, 385 addition to the budget.
Okay, I see the numbers here.
Yeah, there you go.
So the 7.4 million estimated subsidies, that's already in is what I'm hearing. And it's just about whether or not we want to move another 300,000 further. Yeah, I'm seeing none. Okay, so Mike, I guess my question is, I know you said you're recommending this. Do we see from the current rate of ridership as of now that scenario two, three, or four would be justified or needed? Or what would be the argument to move it up, other than just we are offering more service? But has there been a demand for this?
Not from a wholesale perspective, as through to Counsel Hughes, sorry. Indeed, we did have a number of customer complaints when we made our initial transfer at approximately these hours that we're recommending. We did have some initial customer complaints, but that was exaggerated by the fact that we shifted the transit center from Village to Nagy. Currently, we are experiencing no more customer complaints than we would traditionally receive. Therefore, we believe that the service we're recommending is well within our service levels and current ridership expectations. Obviously, the more hours available, the better the service, the happier the customers will be. But whether it warrants the increasing costs, it is our recommendation that it does not.
And how has the ridership been in the past couple of months? Has it increased at all? Like I would assume it would have increased a bit in September, just because summer break was over and more people were coming into work. Is that, but have we seen September to now, has there been any further increases in ridership?
There was a small bump at the beginning of September, but we're still running around 80% less than traditional.
And so in the past two months, though, we really haven't seen an additional bump, right?
Sorry, yes, no additional, right? There was a small bump but increase at the beginning. Apparently, 12% of post-secondary students are on campus, so some of those people were riding our buses, so they started again. But nothing to warrant increasing over and above what we've recommended.
The other thing is Groot Road Bridge here is going to be done soon. So we had additional costs to mitigate around the fact that we couldn't go over Groot Road Bridge. Have we reduced these costs for this year? And do you know, like, is there any good news from that that we have in the plan?
There's definitely good news because being able to go back on Groot Road is a much more convenient route for those that access university, et cetera. It opened, I think, last weekend. Unfortunately, there's still a bunch of pending closures for various deficiencies and whatnot on the contract. So all transit providers have committed to returning to use, to scheduling its use November 29th. I'm not aware of any cost savings that we had by virtue of the bridge shutdown. And I should remind Council that our move to Nagy was our staff restructured the routes to accommodate what would have been a $1.5 million increase in extending our services to Nagy as a primary transit center. So that's already been absorbed within the restructure that we've done.
I just thought that we had to pay more for the rerouting to detour around for the past couple of years. Like, I feel like it came to Council for extra money, but I might have been wrong. I mean, maybe, maybe.
I'm not aware of that, and I don't believe any of my transit cohorts on on screen now were here either, so.
It might have just happened in my mind, you know, and then and then I've just translated into being reality. But we definitely did have the detours. So that is, so the good news for the public, oh, for them that are currently watching, is that we have just a couple more weeks. And then we're actually going to be able to go over that Groot Road Bridge for real. And those detours and the issues of trying to connect with the LRT constantly will now be a thing of the past for people who do want to go to university, which is excellent for people who, my understanding is that there's going to be more people going to the U of A as of January. They aren't opening up all of the schedules, but they are opening up more classes, is my understanding. So there might be opportunity for a bit more ridership with that. Okay, that was it for questions. Oh, I want more. If that's okay, Mayor Hearn.
Yeah.
Is the on-demand service. How is that going?
I'll ask Ator to address that. Thank you.
Yes, it's doing really well considering the COVID issue. We're carrying approximately 900 passengers per month since it started, and it seems, the ridership seems to have leveled off. We're pretty happy with it. The customers are, seem to be pretty happy with it. We've not gotten over any difficult bumps at the very beginning where customers were having some difficulty planning their trips. We've managed to overcome all of those obstacles and issues and concerns, and ridership is stable. And our customers seem to be pretty happy with it.
Okay, because there was a lot of complaints at the beginning, like you said, but that seems to have leveled off or decreased significantly, I'm hoping?
Yes, it has. Yes, many customers, you know, it's it's brand new, so there was a little bit of apprehension, little bit of fear in using the app. Our customer service staff was terrific. They literally took, you know, I'd say hundreds of calls just to help customers through the process and show them how to use the app. And ever since then, that first month was difficult, but ever since it's been doing extremely well. Our calls have significantly declined and concerns just don't seem to really be there.
And that move, was it to save money or did it end up costing us more money? I thought it was a cost savings plan to do the on-demand, is that right?
I can answer that. It hasn't really saved any money because we've just transferred our Dollar Ride service, which was using two buses, and those same two buses are what's being used for our on-demand service, and we're using the same amount of hours. If we were to carry the same number of passengers under different circumstances, other than the COVID pandemic, we believe that we could probably see some cost savings. But right now, it's just a straight transfer, same buses, same amount of hours of service at the same cost.
Great, thank you. No more questions. Thank you.
Counsel Hughes, I just want to add that one of the goals we hope to see through on-demand is a deferral of purchasing of additional inventory by making more effective use of the current assets that we have.
Thanks.
Before I go to Counsel Mackay, I might have missed this, Mr. Hiltz, in your presentation. Where are the business cases for the public works and suggested service levels changes?
The, I don't believe that they had any business cases for enhanced service. They would have those in, oh, we're still waiting for for Public Works to get the, to get the, the changes to service levels, reductions to us.
Yeah, okay, so can we ask questions? I mean, I haven't read.
Yeah, Tony's on there and he'd be able to probably answer those questions.
We'll go to Counsel Mackay first.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm, I'm going to talk about the traffic calming strategies. So I'm not sure if Dean's on here or not, or if you're going to be able to answer that, or who's doing that. I just have a question around the the comment in there that basically you're amalgamating what's remaining of the safe journeys to school.
I think that comes under planning and engineering.
Is that later?
That's the next, that's the engineering one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got, I have, you know what? I apologize for doing that. I'm looking at, I, what I'm looking at is the.
That's what I want to ask about, the buses going on the roads.
Yep, I apologize. Take that all back, put that on rewind. I'm sorry about that. Thank you.
Dean was panicking. He was not ready.
No, yeah, I'm sorry, Dean. Sorry about that.
Any Public Works or Transit questions? Okay. All right, Tony, so you've got two service level reductions and they're called, one is called Operations Streets and Roads and the other one's Operations Turfs. I don't understand that this scope statement, it just says revised service provision of Public Works, triage service to third-party contracting, 25% C, but I don't know what we're cutting. Are we? Is this snow removal, is it? And how much? So do you have answers to this, or should we wait till we get the business cases? And the same goes for the turf one.
I understood we might be entering in-camera discussions regarding this. The scope statements we've provided represent cost reductions while trying to preserve service levels based on the response from Council when we met with them relative to the P P B discussion. So how and where it actually occurs requires a much deeper dive into the methodology. So really, what you're seeing there is concepts, looking for, I guess, endorsement or direction to proceed further with those concepts if they are endorsed.
Okay, my next question is why were they permanent? But you kind of, so you're telling me you can save 162,000 plus another 172,000 in these areas without service level reductions?
That's, that's the current projection. That's correct.
Okay, so I guess question for either of you, Kevin or Carrie, why do we need a council motion to do that then? There's no service level reduction, just do it. I mean, I'll make the motion right now. I don't understand this.
Again, I would, I would, I would remind Council, I understood you got some correspondence relative to possible service delivery revisions that we would be, we would have the privilege of speaking in camera about prior to them being discussed in a public forum. So I think it's at that point where we could maybe expand a little bit on maybe some of your questions. Council's endorsement of what's listed there would be endorsement of the concept. And the implementation would would have some pretty major ramifications or implications for our current service methodology.
Okay, so a question for either you or Kevin. Do you want to go into camera today, or do you want to give Council some background and then we have a business case or whatever? And then we do it on the 24th. I think Kevin's going to answer that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really want to delay it, but again, we're just, these are, as I said, we're fluid dynamics. We're preparing those business cases, so perhaps if we review them and make provision to go in camera at a later date.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't know what's on the agenda for the 24th budget meeting, but we could put it on there.
Yeah, certainly.
Okay, all right. So Tony, can you come back on the 24th and we'll go on camera to talk about this?
Certainly. Thank you very much.
Counsel Hanson.
Thank you. Tony, my question is about the unfunded project charter on the transit waiting shelters. And it's not that I'm jumping to want to fund that, but I just wonder if you could tell me, have we got people standing out in the cold very much that need shelter? And where would you, where would you put that on the priority list over the next few years?
Fairly low. We are reasonably comfortable deferring it as we have done for the last couple of years. We are actually in discussion with our third-party advertising contractor, of which shelters are part of their obligation with us. And so we're negotiating with them for a little bit more support from them in that regard because we've, we've sort of traded some services, we've put in some concrete pads and stuff that were technically part of their obligation. And so we're hoping to sort of trade that for, for some shelters. Certainly, their, their desire is to have basically the super shelters, which contain the large posters, et cetera, et cetera. So that's part of our discussion with them. So if from our perspective, it's fairly low on the priority, and we're happy to defer it.
Okay, and then the other unfunded project growth charter was the transit growth buses. And again, can you just comment on when the need will be for the Jensen Lakes and the Riverside's and, and all of that? And when do you suppose that is going to be critical to fund?
Yeah, very difficult to say. We've actually deferred this probably now for, I think this is our third budget where it's been deferred because the criteria for establishment in those new areas has significantly slowed down. We haven't reached our threshold to, to demand it, so to speak. And as indicated previously in one of the other questions, part of our hope is to defer additional buses by having an on-demand. And that might be how we create service to those areas in a reduced capacity prior to the addition of a traditional route. But that's to be, to be developed yet and brought back to Council as a business case.
Okay, I appreciate that. Hopefully, that on-demand can cover off the riders that need to get from those places downtown or wherever. So appreciate that. Thank you very much, Tony.
Okay.
Counsel Broadhead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Tony, just as you prepare for the November 24th in camera, can you just consider what it would take should, should we need to, on-demand of the public to ramp up some of these services that are, will be provided differently? And what sort of flexibility that a new business model might have or not have in light of what we're doing today? So I'll, I'll just wait to hear, but I just wanted to give you a heads up that I might ask that question from the 24th.
Noted. Thank you, Counsel Broadhead.
Counsel Jolly, do you have any questions?
No, I guess I'm looking forward to seeing those business cases as well. Like, that would be my only comment.
Okay. All right, is there anything else on PW and Transit? Seeing none, I guess we can move on to planning and engineering.
Yeah, so I'll be presenting that one. I'll just get my screen up here.
I'll go to you first.
All right, so yes, I'll talk quickly about planning, engineering, and actually environment as well as is in this presentation. So the departments work closely together to manage the city's growth and sustainability. This includes monitoring and quality and safety of buildings, land developments and public infrastructure. Programs delivered through the environment branch support environmental stewardship, both for the corporation and for the community. So engineering services, planning, and development and the environment departments are funded through this, this funding allocation. So this slide shows the overall impact for the 2021 proposed budget as compared to the 2020 revised budget. The net impact is an increase of $163,000. This is mainly the result of, in terms of revenues, a decrease in transfer from reserves to do one-time funding for the Sturgeon annexation payment of $620,000. An increase in salaries, wages, and benefits due to allocation from the vacant pool and salary annualization for $133,000. Increase in material goods and supplies and services based on anticipated increase in electricity for $110,000. And a decrease in, decrease in other expenditures due to the one-time funding for the Sturgeon annexation payment of $597. And a decrease in contracted and general services to mitigate the financial impact of COVID-19 of $120,000. So in terms of resource requests, the following cases are here for consideration. The first being the inter-ministerial development plan. As part of the city's annexation negotiation process, the city committed to undertaking the IDP with Sturgeon County. The business case will serve to allocate funding for this. The Lakeview Badger Land Area Structure Plan, the area structure plan will encompass both Lakeview and Badger, which will provide detailed answers to key servicing provision, land use and development phasing. The project will also provide a high-level master plan for the remainder of the Western Lands, approximately 12-quarter sections, to ensure adequate servicing is available for private investment and development. The plan is envisioned to provide a strategic direction for future development within this area in keeping with the new municipal development plan. So for the 2021 part project charter, the cost estimate was reduced by 45% in anticipation of ASP requirements being reduced and deferred to a neighborhood structure plan level type planning document. Looking at a land use bylaw update to ensure St. Albert has effective zoning to enable future development. Ideally, the update to the land use bylaw will commence after the new MDP plan is complete to address the new direction in that plan. And for 2021, the project charter, the cost estimate was reduced by 60% in anticipation of administration carrying out the bulk of the project with a reduced amount of help from consultants. Traffic calming strategies, this project enacts on city council policy CTS02 Neighborhood Traffic Calming and recommendations of the Safe Journeys to School Report. It targets completion of traffic safety improvements within neighborhoods, including the school zones and playground zones. And finally, I T S strategy implementation. So this project will, will enact recommendations identified with the intelligent, the Intelligent Transportation System Strategic Plan in 2018 to approve upon efficiency, safety, and information sharing from the city's road network. So in addition, in order to fully meet our environmental master plan objectives, further funding for smart facility monitoring will allow for remote and onsite real-time monitoring of energy use by facility. This will provide long-term financial saving opportunities projected to be approximately $100,000 annually. So in summary, for 2021, Planning, Engineering Services and Environment is proposing an overall net increase of $163,000 from 2019. Key influencers are primarily related to an increase in materials, goods, and supplies and services based on anticipated increase in electricity costs as well as salary annualization. And that concludes the presentation.
All right, Counsel Mackay, I'll go to you first, and I bet you Dean should turn on his camera.
Yeah, Dean, I gave you a clue what I was gonna ask. Thanks, Dean. Sorry about that again for jumping in. I was on the wrong page. But on the, on the, the project charter around the neighborhood traffic and common strategies, we're merging Safe Journeys to School Charter. So I guess for more, my clarity and because I sat on the Safe Journeys to School, what's happening with the, our, is it just going to be prioritized as to what's going on? For example, looking at the Safe Journeys to School capital project worksheet from last year. So for example, there were going to be pedestrian improvements in Lauren Akins, Leo Nickerson, Sturgeon Heights. Do they still stay on the priority list under the neighborhood traffic calming? Or are they just like as needed? Or what, how, how's the work plan going to move?
No, that's, thank you, Counsel Mackay. The, the work itself and the program is essentially going to be combined and prioritized, just like you said. So what we'll be doing is utilizing the Safe Journeys work, the school zones and whatnot, because vulnerable road users are to be maintained as a priority, of course. And then the traffic calming program has already been enacted in some communities that will continue, like Aaron Ridge, Aaron Ridge North, that will continue to be advanced and will continue to receive new requests and address those on a priority basis. But the, the two, the two programs will be joined and prioritized based on site and relevant kind of traffic information and safety considerations to ultimately deliver the programs.
So looking at the charter from last year with Safe Journeys, it was $4,000 for 2021. And then now your active, or your, pardon me, your neighborhood traffic calming strategies is six, is there enough money to do what you need to do? Or is that just, it's, is it just going to be around that whole prioritization? I'm just wondering, I mean, that's a, that's a big difference if you combine it, you're looking, I mean, the whole, I think if I added up all the Safe Journeys to School that's remaining, it was over a million dollars to get it done to completion. So I'm, I'm just a little concerned that we may not be able to, to, to complete the Safe Journeys to School initiatives.
No, so the Safe Journeys initiatives will be completed, except they will be, there, there will be ultimately an impact to the timeline of delivery. That's, that's really what ends up happening. So, and it's just being prioritized with the traffic calming work as well. The, the overall improvements, many of the site improvements are relevant to traffic calming. They're coordinated in regards to the type of measures, the considerations. It's just they are within school zones, very specific zones within the community. And at the end of the day, what it is, is it's a case of those same, you know, considerations are being made and applied. It's just a case of maybe where there was a very aggressive schedule to complete the work. We're finding that some of the improvements, many of the school sites, the vast majority, I would say, action has occurred on school sites throughout the community. And so there's the priority improvements of the Safe Journeys program in the report, the recommendations have been completed. And we're on to more of the, many of the desired, some of the school sites, what were being applied in the Safe Journeys work and the relevance of the traffic calming was essentially more aligned to some of the general network-wide recommendations where pedestrian crossing improvements were being made. And so considerations to address, you know, warning flashers or possible curb extensions or align in that regard. And though they were not specific, unlike areas that were completed with Safe Journeys, specific line items, they were acknowledged in the report as a general improvement to the school site. And so with that, and the alignment to traffic calming, it, it kind of made sense as a program to bring them in together. So we can look at it holistically as a city and look at the project delivery and whatnot and prioritize all these sites more at a network level. But the school site itself will always come into play in regards to, you know, a factor for prioritization.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think, I think there's more energy in relation. Yeah, I appreciate that. I think, I think there's more energy in relation to looking at traffic calming and the importance of it. I mean, I imagine there are some, maybe some high priority locations, but I think we would, we would be able to convince most of the public that around schools, these traffic calming strategies are much more effective than in some other locations. And I'm just trying to think, you know, think ahead on that. Just a comment in relation to, I mean, if we're doing, if this is approved and we move forward, I, I looked on the, our website, Mr. Scoble, just to see where we were in relation to the implementation and on the strategies, and the last update was November of 2019, still on our website. So I mean, it's really out of date. The other one I have is, where are we on the, I mean, how does this fit into the Active Transportation Plan? Or is that now, is that still ongoing or is that finished?
Active transportation is a project as well that's been aligned to delivery with, subject to possible grant funding. The considerations, of course, any kind of pedestrian accommodation will take into account safety and whatnot. The traffic calming itself is, is more aligned to conflict points, whereas the Active Transportation Program essentially delivers network connections. So not necessarily conflict points between pedestrians and vehicles, where, but more a sidewalk or a trail system that links an existing, existing infrastructure to maybe to remove a gap in the network would be the variance between the two. But to be fair, Active Transportation will always take into account a safety consideration. I'll use an example in the 2020 program where the intersection crossing at Corvoo and Carnegie was a new sidewalk placed, but with that, it was also coordinated to place a new pedestrian crossing warning flasher as well.
Thank you. I appreciate the response. Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
So Dean, I noticed that the Active Transportation Plan is completely unfunded this year. Would a small amount of money help? Or is it, can you do some of these connections with your existing budget?
I don't, I may kind of lean back to Donnie or Diane to respond in regards to the grant funding.
I guess I'm wondering, is there certain places in the city that you feel that we really need to move forward on Active Transportation? And maybe not the entire plan, but one project?
So if I could just jump in quickly, so the Active Transportation Charter of 1.1 million for 21 was, has already been approved by council. That was part of the switch over of the ISIP grants. So there is, so there is a project charter moving forward for Active Transportation for 21.
You're right, it's 2022 that it's unfunded. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Ken.
Just, well, I have you, Dean, on the Intelligent Transportation Systems. So I'm just going to the one thing in there where we, paragraph where it says from 2018 to 2020, we utilize two different technologies of the adaptive signal controls, one on St. Albert Trail corridor, the other one on Boudreaux. And then it just says final evaluations are not complete. So is the idea is, is that they're being evaluated? And then part of this is going to go to which system we move to? Is that the intent?
That's correct. That, that's exactly the intent, is to expand upon following the review and kind of documented best improvements in regards to efficiency and user friendliness and, you know, corridor improvements. We would utilize funds to advance integration into other sites throughout the city.
So that, so the last point being is, is if we choose, we draw over the one in St. Albert Trail, we can convert the St. Albert Trail one over easily. We don't have to redo the whole intersections and, and, and basically start at peg one?
No, that's correct. I, I think, to be really blunt and upfront with council is, with the two systems in place, there's, there's, you know, pros and cons to the ITS technology we're finding. And we'll kind of give more kind of formal results and recommendations as, as the evaluations continue. But what we would look is for corridors or areas that do not operate with either system to advance the system before we go and retrofit one with the other. Because both systems, again, will have their benefits and they'll create certain, certain pros. And, but we'd look to improve areas that would be, again, kind of, if there were segments of St. Albert Trail, for example, if we were expanding to the north, we may utilize a different, the technology in those areas because it's a priority corridor, of course. But again, knowing that we have a technology that is effective and efficient would buy us time essentially to allocate funds to address areas that could benefit from either of them.
Pardon me. When, when do we, that evaluation is due 2020? Is that still on schedule to have that in, end of 2020?
Right now, I would be, I don't believe we're going to go past 2020. We are finding that the technology, as we've made some changes on Boudreaux, we're, we're experiencing some good collaboration opportunities with manufacturers and distributors on how they can support their technology and changes and advancing. And it helps us as well. And, but at the end of the day, it may require additional time to perform the evaluation under these changing circumstances and now new knowns.
You could be a politician. That was sugar and honey. The, that's all I think I have for you, but I mean, I might, there might be more. But I, I have a kind of a question. I guess it would maybe touch on environment. And it touches on, I know it's a rec program, but it touches on environment because it's an unfunded Oakmont. And I want to ask a question in relation to the environment on that. In the, and Kate, if this is yours, I apologize, or because I don't know whether or not you would have the information, and I might just have to put in a BIR in relation to it. Because I would imagine a big component of that north portion of the trail that's currently unfunded would involve a lot of environmental studies, just because of the nature of the slope and closeness to the river and potentially some, you know, I think there's some water issues around there and access. Would that, would that fall into environment and rec, or is that just part of the overall charter?
It would be part of the overall charter. As Diane alluded, the first part, I believe she had alluded, was the engagement piece with the resident that would then perpetuate the more detailed geotechnical and environmental studies. But if you wanted a complete answer, I would probably take that as a BIR.
Yeah, I think I'll do that. I appreciate, I appreciate the response. Thank you very much.
All right, Councilor Hughes.
Thank you. So a few questions. The Lakeview ASP, are we paying for the whole thing? Or are we partnering with others to pay for that?
Kevin, did you want me to, to take that?
Sure, go ahead, Adrian.
Yeah, my understanding, Councilor Hughes, is that based on council direction from the past, that we were only contemplating like the full detailed ASP for our lands. However, there is a little bit of complementary work as we move towards a, a new ASP, NSP type of system where we can help to establish the, the general parameters of an overall area structure plan for a larger area without the details. So there's a reduction of costs for that ASP. So the detailed work that we're doing right now is on our lands. The general work for overall or like overarching ASP would be for the bigger area.
So the one for 400,000 is just for our, it's our lands, it's not inclusive of anyone else's? Is that what you're saying?
No, that would, I, that would be to take, to establish an area structure plan that would cover the entire area. So again, we're going to a less detailed area structure plan and a more detailed neighborhood structure plan. So we have savings, that's why there's quite a reduction in the proposed cost of the whole ASP. But the ASP would serve to generally capture the intent and uses general servicing intent uses for the larger area. And then developers would come in with the more specifics on the, on their own lands with the more technical details, which would involve their own neighborhood, neighborhood structure plan and associated costs. So we can establish an area structure plan that would enable development for less than we had anticipated doing the ASP work for our own lands last year, if we were going to the more detailed level, if that makes sense.
Okay, so just so I understand what you said, I think I've got it, Adrian. It was that we're doing a higher level ASP structure so we can meet the demands of ASP. And then as it's going to be developed, NSPs or neighborhood structure plans will then come into play that I wish to give more of the details. So the ASP that we're going to be getting from this would be much more of a broader stroke than what we typically see in an ASP. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct, yeah. The intent is to basically open up more routes or doors to development in those lands, but enable the individual landowners to provide more specificity about what they actually want to do with their lands as they develop.
Perfect. Next question was the land use bylaw update. Now, we just did a land use bylaw update like a year ago or something, it feels like.
2017, and it was adopted in early 18.
Okay, so two years ago. So I'm just wondering, what else are we planning to change in it? That was not, I feel like the last changes, there was some pretty dramatic changes. We've yet to actually see them materialize in neighborhoods because we built out a lot slower. So what else are we looking at changing? Because it's, it's still a fair chunk of change that we're looking at here to do this.
It is. So the, the intent is, once the municipal development plan is approved, we want to make sure to go back through the land use bylaw and review for consistency. We know that there are some areas that are maybe a little bit clunky right now or, or may, may not work without some amendments. And rather than just do like piecemeal, 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 this was proposed as a way to make sure that the full MDP is completely consistent with the full land use bylaw. And we kind of modern.
The LUB we did in 17 was only residential.
It was the residential districts only, that's correct. So different housing forms. And we will be looking at everything from commercial to industrial to parking standards, like the whole gamut would be in the mix as far as, as that is concerned for the land use bylaw amendment. We know that it's a little bit clunky right now in some ways.
Okay, that helps me just said, yeah, we guess we just did focus on residential.
That's right.
Yeah, I would just say that was relates to the parking, just remember that development that we have on the trail, the gray building that has yet to have anybody in it because the parking standards relaxed. You can't find anybody to go in there for love or money. So just keep that in mind as you're coming forward with that next time.
Appreciate that, yeah.
Every time you go past it, it's as empty as a gift.
Well, the market is dictating that that amount of parking maybe didn't work.
Okay, so I think you're off the hook for a few minutes, Adrian. I might come back to you. But there's Mr. Shek Dean. So the ITS system. The, so you, we have two systems, is what you're saying. We're trying to figure out which one we like better. And you eloquently said that we're trying to figure out some bugs in the second system to figure out which one is better. So what are we going to do with the system that we don't, that we choose not to move forward with? Are we going to keep it? Or what are we doing with it? Because that's what I'm assuming, and you can correct me, is whichever one we like to use, we're then going to implement on both corridors, right?
So the, to, to be clear, the intent would be is to keep both in operation and just allow, like, get actual life out of the one that may not be the successful one. But it doesn't mean that we discard it or, you know, stop the use of it and the benefits from it. We would, essentially, the evaluation is to see what technology the city may utilize to advance further with, with the other networks around the city. But I don't think there would be no priority or need in the immediate to completely remove or adjust the one that may not be the successful technology. Because again, there is still going to be that benefit. There's still going to be the use. There has been some form of, you know, essentially costs and resources placed towards it. So we wouldn't want to put it at risk that was complete loss costs for efforts made to date.
Okay, that's good news because I wouldn't want to throw away all that money on the trial. But the next, so where are we looking at expounding it further? Assuming that, once you figure out which system we're moving forward with, where's the next corridor that you want to work on?
So the, the next kind of key areas would be the Hebert, Gervais corridor, the southern section of the city. We kind of see kind of congestion around that area and with the proximity of the intersections. And it's such a small confined area, it's, it's probably a good starting point. The next then is in and around the downtown with the Bell Rose possible corridor as well. And, you know, we'll kind of advance it. Once we get past the key, the, the focus for the actual implementation will be in locations that are, you know, in close proximity to other intersection sites and would benefit from that kind of upstream and downstream recognition of volume and demand, which the adaptive system should effectively thrive in.
Okay, so a couple more questions. And this is just because of, I'm not having, I'm not sitting at your desk doing this. Is the design and planning for this each year is substantial. It's almost as much as the cost of the actual equipment. And I'm trying to figure out why, because we're, we're buying the system and then we're implementing the system. And so I'm trying to figure out why the design would be, you know, the cost that it is each year.
So in terms of, bear with me, I'm just seeing. So it's not necessarily the design and planning. There is, with both systems, there is, prior to the actual system being put in operation, there is time taken to collect data from sites, analyze the data, and essentially set up the parameters for the adaptive system. So it is pretty substantial leading into it. It's not just a off-the-shelf software that is applied in a kind of a switch flick and it's now adaptive. You know, essentially each site and area is set up and formed to, to operate with the demands of that, like proactively set. The other consideration is there's other work going on beyond just the adaptive work itself. So aligned with like the digital message sign, there's some design work that would have to go with the placement of the signs, some of the PTZ camera, the point tilt zoom camera, which is a live video and whatnot, just requires some design work as well in regards to the pole structure and placement and power setup, the underground work to accommodate it.
Okay, that does help me, thank you. The other question I had relating to this one was, we have it going forward for the next 10 years. And I, I'm just trying to figure out, like, I don't, I don't know which intersection would not have been touched by then 10 years from now. Like, we only have so many corridors. So I'm trying to, I am just trying to figure out why we're moving forward on this for 10 years. That's a lot of problem areas, Dean.
Yeah, I, I wish I could say that all traffic management was done and effectively addressed within a shorter time period. But at the end of the day, the, the ITS implementation is not solely, again, just adaptive signal operations or setup or accommodation. You're right, we only have 65 intersections in, in the city here at current, current date. But it, the ITS implementation plan itself addresses multiple other areas and other technologies. And this, this charter is aligned to the delivery of that ITS strategy. Again, not just adaptive system. Adaptive is a priority within the strategy for us to deliver on. And that's the main focus within the first five years of the program. However, there's other things in regards to, you know, from permanent count stations to road weather information systems, point tilt zoom cameras, other smart technology and whatnot that's kind of aligned with that ITS delivery. And that's, so that's what this charter represents.
Okay, so when this is, so how many of these years is to actually put in new ITS systems onto the roads?
I mean, IT, ITS itself is focused around the traffic management and the road system itself. At this point in time, you know, what we're focused on is that, again, that priority is the adaptive. And that's probably the largest component of the initial five years of the budget. And then we have other, like, the digital messaging is anticipated for areas that we can provide opportunity from a traffic management perspective to give notifications to drivers of potential construction, road closures, emergent situations, you know, pending any type of system for, or necessary messaging to the larger, broader community. That's within this as well. There's some components of preemption for transit as well as PW considerations. Again, knowing that ITS is really, and our traffic management systems are really going to be dependent on a lot of data collected, some permanent count stations that are also including not only vehicle stations, but active mode stations as well are being considered in the delivery. And so we, we kind of see this again as, you know, it's a multi, multi-year. And, you know, I got to be very honest to say that not knowing the technologies that could be coming down, downline here, you know, five to 10 years from now, there's really just placeholders in the future for the application of ITS. But the pro, the, the stronger program delivery and planning But the stronger program delivery and planning is in that first five years that I believe was an attachment to the charter.
Okay, thank you. So the first, really for five years and we'll just see what happens after that is what you're telling me, which is, is fine. I'm wishing you luck on that Hebert Road in front of Safeway. We just, my son and I just drove it this morning and we were able to hit every red light, all three of them, fifty feet apart. It was quite the skill. And he's like, look, red again. So good luck on that. The last section I have though is the traffic calming. So I think this is probably going to be a BIR, but because you have the numbers here on the collisions across St. Albert. And they're steady, but they really haven't gone down. I guess there's one anomaly when it went up to three seventeen and then it's been higher than it's saying two fifteen. So what I'm looking for are the neighborhoods that have had the traffic calming put in with the bulbouts, et cetera, and the number of collisions, PDOs from two years prior and then from the time it was put in forward. I know when we discussed this before, it had been relatively young in the implementation, but I do believe we've had a couple more years in this. And I am, I'm curious to see whether or not they've actually seen the numbers drop or not, based on whether or not this is effective. The numbers that you have here for, so I'll be putting that as a BIR because I'm looking at you and I'm thinking you don't have those numbers off the top of your head. And I wouldn't expect you to unless you're like Superman, but I'm willing to protect the, pretend that you are. You don't have those numbers off the top of your head, right?
I, knowing that this was likely a question, I did have, I do have a sheet in front of me that can be shared with council. I don't have it as a soft to share or anything like that. It may be best as a BIR just for.
Yeah, we can do this BIR because you have La Combe Park, Aaron Ridge and Grandin. And I'm assuming that those are the neighborhoods that you're planning to put them into or the ones that you just put them into or the ones you're planning to put them into. That, because I have the numbers here from page one twenty-two for those three. Is that where you're planning to implement them next?
Yeah, so in terms of the traffic calming delivery, we will continue and likely the anticipation is that we'll finish the Aaron Ridge, Aaron Ridge North communities for the delivery of the final approved traffic calming, traffic calming plan for those neighborhoods. And then we've also implemented, completed the public engagement and implemented temporary measures on Lennox in the La Combe Park East area. And so we'd be looking to, following the process, kind of engage and possibly deliver permanence areas in the La Combe area as well.
Okay, so I know Lennox was a top priority actually when all this came forward, the traffic calming was that Lennox Drive. So you, I haven't been up there. So we've put in the temporary measures right now, is that correct?
Correct, yes, yep.
Okay, and I'm assuming. How was the public feedback on that one?
Very positive to date. To be upfront, I've had some engagement with non-residents of Lennox Drive who are not overly enthusiastic of a reduced speed on Lennox. But in terms of the measures themselves, I can use an example. I think you're aware of one of the key residents that initiated and was part of the early discussions around traffic concerns and safety on Lennox. And in my recent discussions with him and over the past, he's very happy with the work that's been done. And I, I got to be pretty upfront and say in that my world, no news is often good news. And so, you know, this isn't case where I would say we're not receiving a great deal of communications of concern in regards to the traffic calming efforts and the temporary measures that have been placed. We have received some positive messaging in regards to better driver yielding to pedestrians was a key concern. The speeds on Lennox Drive, we haven't received any reports in the transfer and in my area. I don't know about the enforcement area of ongoing speed issues in regards to the Lennox Drive section. So we've seen a drop in comparison to what we would have in the past. But, so I would say at this point right now, my interpretation of everything I've heard and what I, what I've, my discussions that I've had is it's been positively received.
Okay, so do you know if the traffic count has gone down on Lennox as well? Because one of their concerns was just the level of congestion on there. Do you know if it actually dropped its numbers? So I'm just thinking that the short cutting might have, it might have discouraged short cutting.
My apologies, I don't have the traffic volumes, of course. But we can get all of that, all of that data with a BIR.
Okay, I'll put all this in a BIR for you in that way. I know you were looking for something to do this November, right? Okay, so you're saying Aaron Ridge, Aaron Ridge North and the Lennox, La Combe Park is where you're looking at to go next? And you know, I'll just ask you for those stats coming forward afterwards for all the neighborhoods that you have implemented so far. And I think that's it. Thank you for all the time.
Counselor Hanson.
Hi, thank you. I only have one question and it's about the contaminated sites remediation. I think I asked about this last year and I guess my question would be, how long can we reasonably defer this? And secondly, does the contamination get worse as years go by?
Thank you for your question, Counselor Hanson. So in terms of the contamination, once the point source has been stopped, the contamination doesn't get worse. So in the case of the one, the project charter you're looking at, it specifically is looking at the snow site, which we've stopped dumping there now. So the contamination will not get worse. It's more a timeline of and a correlation to what council would like to do with that land. If the use is going to change and the desire is to sell it for a different use, then there would be a cost benefit analysis to get the remediation done. Versus if it's going to remain a compost depot for a period of time, there probably is no value to date in doing the remediation.
And there's no, there's no government regulations that says we have to have this done by a particular time?
No, we have a management plan in place and we do the sampling as required by legislation. So that is our legislated mandate and it is, it is included in our inventory of risk. But in terms of getting it cleaned, it doesn't, there is no requirement today.
Okay, thanks for that.
Took one of my questions, Counselor Hanson. Counselor Watkins.
Yeah, my questions were about the Lakeview Badger ASP. And I remember the discussions we had back then and it was about going and seeing the other people who were participating landowners in the area and asking if they wanted to pay their proportionate share of the ASP. And it seems what I heard today is that we didn't do that, but we're going to do an ASP for all the lands. And we're going to do detailed work on our lands and less detailed work on the other lands. And that this will allow us to go right to subdivision, but that the people who own the rest of the lands will have to do another plan, a neighborhood structure plan before they can go ahead. Is that, is that what I heard?
Yeah, so Counselor Watkins, we have been in contact with the, the one landowner in those lands that is known to be a developer about whether there's opportunities for us to work together. The, the proposal is that rather than do a detailed area structure plan, which would require a lot of the technical studies to be done for either our land or our land and other landowners' lands, what we're proposing to do is create a higher level area structure plan that is essentially more of a concept plan for the area that would involve engagement with those people. But it would, it would allow us to create a high level plan without getting into the nitty gritty of determining how individual landowners would then propose to use their land. And it would keep us out of being required to do the additional technical studies on the lands. I don't know if that helps or not.
Well, we have to do a neighborhood structure plan for our lands after we do this area structure plan?
We, we would have to, we would have to do, so I guess I should say that we can include the neighborhood structure plan, neighborhood structure plan work for our own lands as part of this. But, but we would need every other party that doesn't come in at the same time to do their own detailed technical work through the NSP processes. So we can do basically.
So we're doing an ASP for all the lands?
Yes.
And at the same time, we're going to do an NSP just for our lands?
We can do an NSP for our lands. I guess it depends on, on where we get with the vision for the uses, et cetera.
If. Whole idea was to try to get a plan so that we could go right to subdivision, so we'd have land that we could.
Yeah, so if, if we're comfortable with that as part of this process, then we can go through, straight to the NSP at the same time as the ASP and run that all in-house so that we're being consistent with our own document and we, we would then be ready to sell or subdivide our lands.
I guess I'll ask the question differently. Is there, do we require an ASP to go to subdivision in the city of St. Albert? Or do we require an ASP and an NSP?
Right now, we are, we only require an ASP. We're, we've developed a protocol or a practice in place that we've been in discussion with UDI over the past several months, which would change the city from ASP only to ASP and NSP. And the reason behind that is it will enable essentially quicker development because we can, we can identify where core services would be located, where materials and possibly collectors could be located so that we know that the whole area functions. And then that allows other people to come in and do their detailed planning and move densities around, which has typically been a hiccup with the new growth plan.
And once again, so what we're approving here is money to do an ASP? And we will, we will still need to do an NSP for our lands prior to development?
Yes, we need to do it. If, so I guess it's a, there's a little bit of two things going on. We're proposing to go to ASP NSP, which council will have to approve that practice. Or no, I guess you don't. I take that back. You don't have to approve that practice. But well, yeah, so we're proposing to do ASP NSP and then we're proposing as a new structure for statutory plan approvals. And then we're proposing that we would do an ASP for all the lands, basically from Big Lake up to, I guess Range Road two sixty and then we could do the Badger lands as well, as long as we just basically fit in what's being proposed for Range Road two sixty.
Okay.
You're good? I have a quick question on that topic, Adrian. What's just roughly, what is the cost comparison to do an NSP as compared to an ASP? Just wondering if it's adding costs to go to this new approval. Is it adding costs for developers or is it making it less expensive?
Well, I don't even.
Would you? Would you want, Mayor, would you want to submit that as like a budget for request? So that we can give you some detail? Because I'm just looking, last year we had the full, the full ASP, like a detailed technical ASP for those, all of those lands was one point three million essentially. And now we're, you know, cutting it back down to four hundred thousand for just the ASP. So we'd have to do some specifics on what it would cost per an acre base or hectare basis and.
Okay, I don't need to submit it as BIR for this budget. It's just kind of a curiosity. So this does require council, oh, you said it doesn't require. Maybe it's a conversation we have in the future because, I mean, I've heard a lot of developers ask for this. They say our area structure plans require way too much detail.
Yeah.
Area structure plan, but if it's, I need to do both for them. I'm putting aside this, a city area structure.
I, I will say, yeah, I guess we can, we can do some digging and just do a follow-up to council on this. But with our conversations with UDI, there's been a lot of support for moving from ASP to ASP NSP just because I think time, the time value is greater.
Okay, awesome. All right, Counselor Hughes.
Thank you. I thought I was done and I wasn't, but this is actually a little bit from last, last, two days ago or whatever. So it might be Kate that need to look at, I'm not sure. What I'm wondering is the Meadowview Drive project for the expansion construction, RWP West. This is in several phases. I'm not sure who I need to talk to, Mr. Scobal. Is the person who needs to talk to, they still here?
I'm not sure if Kate can speak to it or not, or we need Diane or.
Okay.
Yeah. Kate, are you able to or?
I don't have the details on that, I'm sorry.
That's the, the trail one?
Yeah. What I'm wondering, and you can tell me.
Should we do a date, Kevin, that we do all the questions? Like that was Tuesday's presentation. Should we do a period on the twenty-fourth that we can just randomly ask?
If I could ask council members, if you have questions, let us know, send them to us or just let us know which department.
We'd like Diane to be there, we'd like. Because Diane's not here.
She's just not on the meeting.
Yeah, she wasn't supposed to be. Is that okay, Counselor Hughes?
Look, can I just, can I just put it out there and then I can send it in as a BIR? But just so that, I mean, they may have the answer and I don't want to have to have them write up stuff if they don't need to. Is just that we have this in several phases. And I'm wondering, like, I'm just doing a hypothetical here, but so this time it's three point one million. And then in two years, it's another three point one million. So what I'm wondering is, let's just say in two years' time, we decide like we can't, we don't want to pay for this because we're going to be moving forward with a rec facility or something else instead. When we're finished the phase one, can it be a standalone or is it going to look like half a construction site? I don't know if you have those answers or not. Do I have to talk to Diana about that?
Yeah, we'd recommend that to come in as a BIR.
Okay, I'll put that forward because that's just, that's just a concern in general is, are we actually committing to everything or it will look like it's half done? I guess is the concern. Okay, I will type it up and we'll move forward. Thank you.
All right, Adrian, you still there?
Yep.
The IDP is proposed at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Is that just half the price? Because we're proposing we cost share that with the county.
Yeah, and I've talked with the county as well. So they're not to the point of budgeting for this, the IDP work in this twenty twenty-one budget, or at least that was the last I had heard. We wanted to budget our end of the work at least in twenty twenty-one so that we can get started on it in late twenty-one, presuming the annexation order goes through and all of that. But it's more of, we wanted to be able to start doing the work now rather than wait until after twenty-one and then.
Yeah, that was my other question. An IDP is going to be a couple of years process, I would assume, much like the MDP.
I would assume so.
So, you know, we're at the end of our term. Would it be maybe if Sturgeon's not willing to move forward yet, we don't have an approved annexation yet, would it be better to just postpone this whole project to two thousand and twenty-two?
Well, again, based on Sturgeon not going forward, I don't know, I don't have a problem with that necessarily. It was just, we had earmarked it as something that the annexation negotiation committee had agreed on. And so we wanted to put that out there as a deliverable so that we wouldn't be missing it.
Right. Okay, I'll put it in a postponed motion to move that to two twenty-two, but funded. And then we'll just write a letter to the county thing, we want to do this, but we'll wait for you, for you to be ready.
Yeah, and again, from what I understand, Sturgeon County Administration was not moving forward with funding for twenty twenty-one. They're moving to twenty-two.
Interesting. Utilities. I think we referenced all the ITS stuff of Dean's. Yeah, you guys asked all my questions. Okay, I think that's it. Is that it? Oh, Counselor Jolly.
Yeah, I've got a few questions, thank you. So my first one is just to Ms. Polkowski about the contaminated sites. So thank you for kind of adding clarity to that. So I just want to confirm that there are kind of no added risks for delaying this kind of indefinitely. Is that kind of what you were saying?
Indefinitely is probably the wrong word to use. It sort of depends on what the intention of the lands will be. So we have management plans and we continue to sample at all of our contaminated sites. That practice will continue and we'll report the findings to the province as required. But having kind of an understanding of what the financial implications would be to full remediations of any of our contaminated sites is what this project charter does to better inform decision-making for council in the future. So it's good information to have when making decisions on what you will do with land in the future.
Okay, thank you. And my next question is it might be for you, the unfunded facility water and energy audits and cogeneration. So can I help me with this? So our environment strategy kind of has us going after targets. And Mr. Scobal kind of alluded to those in his presentation about the funded project. Can you explain kind of why these didn't hit the top of the list or?
Well, it's probably, it's probably more, that's probably more of a discussion about the capital prioritization. It just, it just doesn't get prioritized high in terms of the risk, the risk and safety attributed to the projects. Again, I, I think they're fabulous, but that's just my own personal opinion. It just doesn't hit, it just doesn't meet the bar, that's all.
Okay, then, so for the first one, the facility water and energy audits, could you kind of expand on the, the benefit that would have in terms of those environment priorities?
So what it does is it provides information of where we are, I guess, excessively using water or have some energy pigs that we can change the way we do business to capitalize on savings in the future. So it's ways of looking at buildings to be more informed of how we make operational decisions that can affect the bottom line. So again, great projects, it can reduce our water consumption in our facilities. It can reduce our energy consumption in our facilities and make us more environmentally long sustainable, but also help the bottom line. So it just provides ways of getting data so that we can inform facilities and the users of each of the facilities, how to change small things to affect the bottom line.
Okay, thank you, that's great. And then, so the cogeneration, that would be kind of a straight up, kind of reducing energy costs. Is that, am I reading that right?
Yeah, so if you look at the table in that particular charter, the estimated total savings annually is about just short of $100,000. And then your emissions reduction is about 710 tons of carbon annually. So it's got some really good features attributed to it. Cogeneration is almost like an intermediary technology that is, that will function for probably the next 10 to 15 years, prior to things really changing, my guess, in 15 years. But it has great potential cost savings in the immediate future.
Great, thank you. And my next question is for planning, so thank you very much for that. So my question is about the unfunded revitalization strategy for mature neighborhoods. So right now, it seems that it's, I mean, there's no strategy right now in terms of infill. I mean, I, I just look at what's going up in neighborhoods and some of it's fantastic and some of it is, is not. So can you kind of explain how this, this project would tighten that up?
Yes, Councilor Jolly, so right now we do have infill guidelines for the city, but I wouldn't necessarily say, they're, they're more transactional than strategic.
Yeah, I can see that.
So, yeah, so the idea was, once we got the MDP done, we've tried to identify some, some policy direction within the MDP for our infill targets, et cetera. And then the next step would be to go and really identify in a strategic way what areas are best suited for develop redevelopment or what sites are best suited for redevelopment? And look at our servicing capacities, you know, like location, locational attributes, all these types of things, potential impacts on existing neighbors. And then try to identify some more targeted areas for infill and areas that maybe are best left for infill later on in the life cycle of the buildings. So it's kind of a, a longer-term approach and a more strategic approach to enabling what we already have in pursuit of our goal of, I think it's 17, 20% infill for the city over time here.
Okay, thank you. So, so with the MDP being approved hopefully next spring, it's kind of the land use bylaw and then this project or the, the next two that are important. Did I understand that right?
Yeah, they're a simple, they're, they're essentially like implementation measures of the municipal development plan.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Excellent. All right. Any more questions for environment or planning or engineering? All right, I'm moving on now to final one, which of course is utilities. So who's doing the presentation? All right, Carrie, go ahead.
Thank you, worship, members of council. Last up for discussion today is utility services plan and budget. Utility services function area funds and provides water, wastewater, storm water, garbage collection disposal, compost and recycling services for St. Albert residents. Utility services function also ensures that the city's utilities infrastructure is developed and maintained in a cost-effective manner consistent with regulated safety and environmental standards. This slide shows the overall impact for the 2021 proposed budget as compared to the 2020 revised budget. Utility services budget is a net zero budget, so any changes to expenses from year to year are matched with revenues of equal value. Some of the changes include revenues, the increase in sales and user fees, primarily due to significant increases in water purchase and wastewater treatment cost and reduced water usage, $1,743,000. Expenses, an increase in salaries, wages and benefits for solid waste, staffing support and contingency adjustments, $145,000. An increase in purchase from other governments due to increase in water purchase and wastewater treatment costs, $1,346,000. An increase in material goods, supplies and utilities due to an increase in electricity and natural gas, $50,000. An increase in other expenditures to reflect updated equipment, charge, usage rates and utility contingencies, $150,000. An increase in principal repayments for Project Nine, $679,000. Utility, utility services are proposing one business case geared towards corporate business plan implementation. Vacuum truck. Currently, the city expands approximately $100,000 annually on vacuum truck contract services. That's within utility service alone. The purchase of an additional hydro vac truck would provide interdepartmental support for subsurface work throughout the city. Utility physical policy and rate setting model provides a methodology that clearly reflects the annual incremental costs of goods and our services purchased, administrative overhead and capital requirements for each of the four business units, water, wastewater, storm water and solid waste. Proposed water rates. Proposed changes to water rates include a one cent increase in the flat rate and a seven cent increase in the variable rate due to an increase in the upper water purchase rate and also lower forecasted water consumption per capita. A decrease in supplemental capital, capital contribution of $2.98 results in a slight decrease overall in the water rates for 2020. Proposed wastewater rates. Proposed changes to wastewater rates include no increase in the flat rate, a 15 to 19 cent increase in the variable rate due to an increase in the Alberta Capital Region Wastewater Commission variable rate and also lower forecasted water consumption per capita. A decrease to the supplemental capital contribution of $1.55. Proposed stormwater rates. For 2020, there is a four cent increase in the single-family home for solid waste. Proposed changes to solid waste rates are a 53 cent increase in solid weight, in solid waste flat rate due to updated equipment charge usage rates. When you mean all of the utilities and overall monthly rates, assuming a large-sized waste cart and an average monthly water use of 16 meters cubed has decreased by 40 cents. In summary, for 2021, utility services will once again have a net zero budget. Key influences are primarily related to changes to the supplemental capital contribution revenue and decrease in purchases and other governments due to trending, trending lower water consumption. This concludes my presentation for utility services.
Thank you, Mr. Hiltz. I think when we read of the utility model, the goal was to not have huge fluctuation in utility rates. And we have achieved that, that.
Yes.
This is amazing, yeah. Council Hughes.
Thank you. A couple of questions. So the vacuum truck we're saying is basically it'll pay itself off in about five years, is what we're saying, right? Because it's 500,000. What about the staffing? Are we just going to, do we have existing staff and that can use and operate this?
Sorry, go ahead, Carrie.
Bring that over to Kate.
Yeah, Carrie doesn't know anything about utilities.
He, he knows enough. So the business cases for the staff attributed to the solid, the vac truck would come in 2022. It takes about a year to build one of these trucks. Although I do have staff that are trained operators, I don't have the staffing, the number to add to staff to operate this vehicle.
Okay, so how many staff would we have to, to hire after we get the truck? As you're saying, in 2022.
That's correct.
Going to be looking at the staffing for the truck that we're buying today. So how many more staff would we expect to require for that?
Would require one operator and one laborer, so two.
Two. So I would assume it's fairly safe to say there'd be another $120,000. And I'm being asked, I'm being low on the estimate of how much it would cost us in staffing.
I have it in the vac truck charter. Give me one second to just take a look specifically what the operating costs would be. So you'll see at the back end of the wastewater 021, the utility staff attributed to it in 2022 would be 162,000 annually.
And that's for actually nine months, not?
No, for 2022. So that would be bringing them in January 1st, 2022 and getting them running.
Yeah, but normally if we're hiring them for 2022, we actually pay for nine months of the 12 that year, is what I'm thinking.
I think when we worked it out with finance on this particular business case, because the vac truck would be ready to go at the end of 2021, we actually built it in to be 162. You'll see in that operating impacts in that charter that the same utility staff costs are for 2023 and onward. So we did build in 12 months into that original first year.
Okay, so our cost will be $262,000 a year. So how long do we think that truck is going to last?
So we do have, if, again, in that particular charter, we have the capital replacement built into it as well. So the total annual cost, including the replacement of it in the fleet, is $268,430, which includes fuel, the contracted services to kind of facilitate managing it and the capital replacement.
Okay, so we're going to pay 268 a year to save paying $100,000 a year. So when do we, it's going to take us a little while to break even on this.
So again, what, we spend 100,000 today in vacuum truck services by utilities. What we have realized is there are a number of departments that also have vacuum truck services that we can increase the utilization of a truck. Because again, the more we utilize a truck on an annual basis and the less it sits idle, the more it returns its investment to the city. So the intention would be to ensure that we have the necessary partnerships with my fellow colleagues throughout the city to capitalize on our vac truck and have it doing locates, have it doing cleaning services and utility locates for them as well when they do have services. So an example is if we do install fiber, I'm having parameters within charters that they use our vac truck, which we do at cost, obviously. And then we can remove the materials and dry them and then remove them at a cheaper rate.
So when do we figure we'll pay this investment off?
The intention would be that we would have it completely paid off if you built up the payback within likely a three-year window. Again, these, we do put about a seven-year cycle on these particular assets. So have them replaced on an annual basis at seven years. Because after seven years is when they generally start to cause the garage substantially more time and effort. So that's sort of what you try and balance it to make sure that it's, it's managing the finances at that point.
Okay, I'm just trying to do math here in my head. So over a seven-year period, if we contracted out it, it's $700,000. And we're going to pay $168,000 for staffing and 100 and $500,000. So that would be like, well, if we just take, like, let's say 200,000 times seven is 1.4 million. So we'll just bring it down to like 1.2. And then we're going to pay the truck for 500,000, so that's 1.7 million. So our total cost over the course of seven years would be 1.7 million, right? No, am I doing something wrong in my brain? What is?
So what you're not, what, the only thing you're not considering is today we do about $100,000 of contracted services. What we are suggesting is that we would capitalize on synergies between some of the charters out there in place today to have it used more than 100,000. So there is substantially more vac truck services that are used throughout the city on an annual basis in much of the capital projects. So it would be about increasing the synergies between the departments to utilize this truck so it didn't sit idle for months, like a week here and a week there, but have it on the road all the time being utilized. At that point, it's probably more than likely being utilized at a $300,000 value annually, just because it's being used by, operated by one department, but used by other departments.
Okay, so if we say it's a $300,000 value instead of a $100,000 value, the costs on this are still 1.67, almost 1.7 million. So we'll break even after about six years unless I'm doing something differently than you.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's the intention is like on, that you would be breaking even about right before you would be replacing it, but you've built in the replacement costs of it. So then you're just, at that point, you're just, it's ongoing, just paying for the staff to operate it because we've already saved for its replacement at year seven.
Okay. Okay, I'm just, I'm still, so we're looking at a six-year payoff for this. And then after that, then we'd see the savings coming in. Is that what I'm saying?
Yeah. And then again, if you like pull up that charter and go to the last page and you'll see the operating impacts of it, Councilor Hughes, and you'll see that we're.
What page are we looking at here? I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me right now.
Uh, I don't know what page in your budget package it's included at. The actual.
Okay, I'll find it somewhere. I just didn't see it when I went through.
Yeah, so look for Charter Wastewater 021.
See, I don't have anything, I have capital charters and I have nothing for utilities.
That's true, we have no utilities.
Yeah, we don't have them here.
Yeah, so I don't have, that's why, that's why I'm looking at you with the deer in the headlights. Look, I don't actually, I don't have it. And I'm aware anyway.
Yeah, I'm just going to jump on and say that you're correct that the one utility, we don't typically have utility growth charters and it did get missed. So we will make sure it gets put on the council site and the public site immediately. Because there is a charter developed for it and somehow it did not make it into the budget package.
So in the, in the business case, this is just because I have you in front of me right now, Kate, do you have the projection, like the 300,000, like the 200 extra thousand dollars that we're projecting in savings? How confident are we on that? That from the other.
I'm probably, I'm probably minimizing the amount of savings that are actually there, in all honesty, Councilor Hughes. We don't have it built into the business case today because again, it is three years out and there can be quite a bit of growth in the city in a three-year window. Again, it would take, takes me a year to build it and then I would get staff to operate it in 2022. So that's when we would start really looking at what charters we have on the place in any one year and capitalizing on those particular programs that are out there. But we would probably be, there would probably be substantially more savings as well as the cost to basically remove the materials that go in the back truck. We do all the de-watering, testing of it in-house and then remove it to the most cost-efficient facility possible. So there would be substantially more savings that some other departments see on a more regular basis that we could get done in-house.
Is there any way, if not this second, like if I were to send it forward, that you could quantify what the potential savings would be?
I could probably quantify what we spend in other programs on back truck services today that would be eligible to be utilized.
That would be helpful. So I'll put that forward just so I can get a clear picture of what you're seeing, if that would, that would.
You bet.
Thank you. I had one more question. Not to you, Kate, I don't, well, you know, who knows? Maybe, maybe you're the utility person. Carrie brought it forward, but I might just be looking at you anyway. So I don't know if I misheard, but my understanding was that the water rates and wastewater rates have gone up like a couple pennies. Was that, was, I, that's what I heard, right? It's that the rates just went up a couple pennies. But then the projected rates for 2021 have gone down. So I'm like, so we're charging more, but then we're projecting the rates to be less. And I'm, I'm trying to come together with those two numbers. So.
Diane, do you want to talk about the supplemental capital contribution?
Oh, is that why? It's because the SEC went down, is that why?
Yes, and, and, and a lot of the, the impacts of different costs impact the different rates differently. So, you know, lower water usage actually causes the actual rate per cubic meter to go up. So, you know, lower water usage actually causes the actual rate per cubic meter to go up is one of the issues that we can sometimes have. And, and also actually what really drives a lot of it is the, again, the ten-year capital plan and the, and the R, and the RMR plan over ten years.
Okay.
So it's a combination of about ten factors. So even though, even though that rate from Epcore went up, there's a lot of other factors that go into it that ultimately create the rates in the end.
Okay. And then the other thing is just, we keep hearing that everyone should conserve water. But now, and I've heard this as well in Epcore, but then when people conserve more water, they're told the rates, the rates go up. So I'm just, I don't know, I just have a comment about that. I just, it's just difficult because there's actually no cost savings if you don't save water, and there's no cost savings if you do save water. It's, and I saw that with Epcore as well, was that their claim was this. But then they'll come back and say, everybody should conserve more water. But basically, it's just so that your rate will be the same at the end anyway. So I, I think that somebody out there who's making these plans has to come back and reconsider what they're doing. Not us, but Ken, you're on the wastewater commission. You should talk to them about that.
And you actually need more water because it flushes the pipes out. So that's part of the problem too, so.
I see. So maybe people should really reconsider this messaging that we're doing about trying to do this because I don't know the implications are all being looked at. Okay, that's it. I'll send you the B I R thing just because you were looking something to do, Kate. And I would, but I, I think it will help me to get a picture of what the actual total cost will be. So thank you for that. That's it.
Counselor Jolly, have any questions on utilities?
No, it looked great. Thank you.
Okay, Kate, on page twenty-eight of our budget package was a nice little chart on landfill diversion rates. It's not really a budget question, I guess, but it's part of the package that the public sees. Any idea what 2020 looks like?
Um, I'd have to ask Olivia to pull those numbers for me. I know she's compiled quite a bit of it. So I, I can get that information and provide it to you relatively easily. We have run into quite a bit of contamination in 2021 that we're trying to work through because we haven't been in the community as much engaging due to COVID. So I don't expect our numbers look as great as last year just because of the contamination we've seen in our organics.
Okay. I mean, I think they're going to look horrible, to tell you the truth, because of all the takeout food and, you know, just living at home. But, and it's not part of budget, so it doesn't have to be immediate, but even a kind of a trend.
Yeah, you bet. And we, we do, we do have the report on the environment that will be coming out, hopefully by the end of this quarter. So all that information will be included with that.
Okay. And if we, you know, so the, the, on page twenty-eight of the package, you, you report water consumption on a per capita. Have we ever thought of reporting solid waste generation on a per capita basis? Because any, because right now, when you do diversion, you just take the total and what went to landfill and what didn't, right? So, but that doesn't give us a good indication if people are trying to change their purchasing habits, et cetera. So is that too hard to do?
It's tough without doing periodic audits of waste, only because if you think when we have water, we meter everybody's house. So I have a pretty good idea of what the single-family home is using from a water consumption basis. Whereas when we, when garbage is tipped in the various functions, it, it's a little bit harder. We do have some of that information in our E M P and our annual report. So again, I can provide that to you when it gets put together for everybody.
So it's not as simple as just taking the total and dividing it by our population?
That'd be high level, but it would be just very high level.
Wes has a question.
Just to follow up on that. So, so the question is, is that if you, if you do diversion from the home, from to the organics and stuff like that, so how do you calculate whether or not people are diverting from their home and taking it to Michael Mitchell? So it diverts from the residential stream, but it increases at the, at the collective recycle center. How, how does that play out?
Well, we do track all of the data that goes into Mike Mitchell as well, and it feeds into our reporting on an annual basis. So although it's, it doesn't a hundred percent get attributed to any of the homes, we do report how much increases we are seeing at our recycling depot for the various streams.
Okay, fair enough. So thank you for that question. And perhaps this is outside budget, but now that I got you here, I'm going to ask it anyway. Some questions were asked of me about how how quickly a water leak through our smart water meters are picked up through corporate monitoring. So if you're away for a day and you have a leaky toilet, would, would that trigger an alarm? Or how does that, how quickly does that play out?
Uh, well, part of it is also seeing when the leak is happening. So it's almost easier when you see that twenty-four-hour period and you see that kind of constant flow in the middle of the night when there should really be not very much flow whatsoever and getting that baseline. So assuming that a user has signed up for our, our, our standard water meter and is connected into the portal, they should, they should be able to check that instantaneously. And I believe they can sign up for notifications when they have that slow leak. But they have to physically sign up for it. It's not like something that I, we have staff all the time looking for.
I think there's an impression out there that these new smart readers, if, if you go away for the weekend and something happens that there's an alarm going off somewhere and people will snap to and you'll get a notification saying, oh, my goodness, you're facing a water leak in your house and quickly run home because you've got massive damage occurring. Is that true or false?
Dan, do you want to take what they get?
Yeah, I'll jump in a little bit and actually we'll, we'll follow up to get the exact timelines. But yes, Kate was correct, though. People have to be signed up for the My City portal to get those notifications. And then as soon as the system recognizes, there's two types of things. There's high water consumption, so where you've had, where there's been a huge amount of water used in a small amount of time, or there's the continuous flow type alert. And, and what I, what I'm not sure of is, does it, does it monitor a continual flow for twenty-four hours? And then it'll generate an email and send it out to, to the resident? I'm just not sure if the twenty-four-hour thing, or how soon after that, that alarm is triggered, that an email gets sent. But the system does automatically read and do that?
But they have to be signed up for it, to clarify.
All right, fair enough. I mean, it's, it's kind of an out-of-the-blue question. I'll, I'll submit an information request just to, because I tell you, there are some people who think, hey, I'm, I got a new meter. Something goes wrong. I'm in Mazatland or wherever I am and, and, and my house is being flooded. I will get the thing notified within fifteen minutes. So anyway, I'll, I'll send you an I R. Thank you.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, it did save me. I had a leak in my backyard. It saved me a lot of money. Anything else for utilities? Counselor Jolly?
Nope, same as before. I'm good.
Yep, okay. All right, I did ask for Sean to come back because I wasn't prepared for Act Dev. Do you want to do that now or do you want to take a quick break, guys? Let's do it now. Sean, are you there?
I am, yeah.
Thanks. All right. So page thirty of our document, the, the permits.
Yeah.
I don't know if you actually can answer this one, but I would think you would because it probably is non-res related. Our development permits really dropped in 2019. Was there something that kind of artificially elevated them in 2018?
Well, in two, I mean, yeah, through you, Madam Mayor, I would say in eighteen, probably the large piece that was driving the development permits was all the development on the north side up by Costco and Jensen Lakes.
Okay.
That was fairly sustained over seventeen and eighteen. And then as the, the land was absorbed, that slowed down pretty drastically. So I, that would, where I would point.
Okay, so you're thinking that's one of the reasons that nineteen was low is because the land, we ran out of land?
I would suggest that, yeah.
Okay. And twenty should look better because of U-Line?
Yeah, I think already today it is looking significantly better as a direct result of U-Line, yeah.
Okay. All right, let's talk about the couple of activities that you had that were suggested service levels things. Because there was no real background around them. So this is small stuff, but the dig-in dining week, you have twenty thousand dollars budgeted, ten thousand for office and operating, and ten thousand for advertising.
Yeah.
You feel like you are recommending an eight thousand dollar reduction to the office and operating, leaving you two? Is that, is that what you're, what you're recommending?
Yeah, so we've transitioned dig-in from an actual festival to more of a celebration of our restaurants and hospitality industry. So what we're suggesting is that we continue on with dig-in dining week. You know, we typically see about fifty thousand dollars in revenue generation for our businesses as a result of our, you know, ten to fifteen thousand dollar spend on marketing and promotion. So what we're suggesting is we will not continue to have the festival itself, but we will continue to endeavor forward to promote the dining week as it has the biggest return on investment for us.
Okay, and so, but my guess, my question is, can you do that with twelve thousand dollars?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so it's just an eight thousand dollar reduction in the budget. That's kind of what I read.
And I would say too, this year we did receive an additional ten thousand dollars in grant funding from the province, from Tribal Alberta, to promote that festival as well, which we are fully utilizing at this moment. And there may be opportunities to continue to leverage grants in that way in the futures.
Okay. I mean, it's only eight thousand dollars. It's pennies in our bucket, but and do the, the restaurants don't contribute at all to the marketing or promotion at all, then?
No, we do that. They just participate. And I think we have over twenty restaurants this year and a lot of them returning from last year as well, so.
Yeah, I'm going on Saturday. Finally, the business breakfast. You are recommending that we keep the entire budget of sixty-one thousand dollars in. I get the value of it. Are we planning on doing it in February? Because I highly doubt we're going to be able to do it in February, or are we changing the date?
Yeah, no, well, so I, just to clarify this, sixty-one thousand dollars, it actually costs nowhere near that to pull off the business breakfast. There's a bit of a, you know, confusion there with the revenues that are generated in the event and some staff time through the P B B kind of allocation for active costs. We certainly are hoping to put it on next year. February is very unlikely. I would suggest probably much later in the year, perhaps into the fall.
Okay, so we'll keep the money in the budgets because I, I agree, I want to do it, just the fall, maybe.
Yeah.
And that might be surplus if we can't do it. That's all I had. Anyone else have anything for Act Dev? No, sorry, Counselor Hughes?
It's all good. Just to, the dig-in dining week, I was, I like what you're doing here because I think it's a lot better than the festival, which was costing a lot more money. But how are you advertising it? Because as just an average human being in St. Albert, I was unaware of it. And this is your second year you've been doing it. So how are we getting the word out about that?
Yes, right now, we're, we're on Facebook, we're on various social media platforms. We're running a contest, we're in the Gazette, we're running in various other, I guess, sub-regional publications and newspapers and online platforms, you know, kind of throughout our catchment basin in Northern Alberta up into Athabasca and places like that. So we are, I think you will see throughout the course of the next couple of days, the lion's share of that money being spent as we ramp up towards the event. But it is mostly digital and, and we are running a contest with gift cards as a component of that for local restaurants. So as we ramp up and get into year two and three, and we have some wins and successes, we'll certainly be able to leverage that. But that's primarily where we're spending that money today.
So I'm just, just so I have an idea, what's different from dig-in week versus just dining period? Like, are they offering different prices or different dishes? Or do they get something back for it? Or are we just telling people, reminding them they should dine out?
Yeah, so there, the, the restaurants that participate all put together a special menu for dig-in dining week consistent of unique items on their menu to really try to drive traffic into the restaurant. So every, you know, the twenty-one or twenty-two participating restaurants, and this year we did add some hotels as well who are doing a stay-in-play thing. They'll all have special menu items for that, you know, seven or eight days during the week to really try to drive traffic to their restaurants.
So the, the fifteen hundred meals, those were specifically for the special menus? They weren't just fifteen hundred meals that they would have had anyways?
Those are new meals, yeah. Those are unique menu items related directly to dig-in.
And how are we, or how are they, or how are anyone communicating what the special menu is?
So we put the menus out in advance of the week. We have physically printed special menus and we've put them online as well. And through our advertising and promotion and marketing, as well as our Facebook page and dig-in website, they'll have access to all the menu items on there.
All right. Well, I think it's a much better idea than what it had before. So I think this is a much better evolution. I can't, when did you come back on as the main guy over there? What did you?
A year, a year.
A year ago? Okay, because I'm like, if you were responsible for that, I like it. So if you weren't, then just pretend you are and we'll be fine. But I think this is a much better way to try to promote local businesses as opposed to just other businesses in the area. So, all right, well, then just keep up with it and hopefully the word will get out a bit more. That's it.
Couple of years ago, we did it on bikes, Sean. We biked all over. Joan Barber led us around. It was good.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Act Dev, Public Works, Engineering, Utilities, Transportation? I'm just going off the people I see on the screen. I think we're good. All right, next thing on our agenda is really P M's and I R's. My first big question is to ledge, where are they? They are not on the member site. They have been posted on the member site. Nope. The ones.
Mayor Heron, may I?
Yes.
Sorry, I emailed Tamara because I couldn't find them and she sent me the links. I still have no idea where they are, but I have the links to get to them.
Let's, we'll look into it.
Yeah, normally you click on the menu and you go to budget two, twenty-one. And then in the, there's a subsection menu on the, on the right. So there is a subsection, but it just leads you back to the main stuff, council inquiries.
It might be a glitch with the member site. Okay.
So for now, could we get them emailed to us?
Yeah, we can get the chart to you. We can email you the chart and then you'll have leads to a piece of it. Yep.
That would be good. Okay, thanks. Or Natalie can give us the link, one or the other. So is there any outstanding B I Rs or postponed motions? I saw a few postponed motions being emailed in over the last twenty minutes or so. We're good. Okay. Next on our agenda is nothing, right? Recess. There is chili coming. I'm not sure. So I'm going to stick around for chili. Yeah, okay, recess till November twenty-fourth. So that gives us a good two weeks almost to absorb this, do a little bit more works, finish off our B I Rs. And yeah, and if you have any questions, either you send them in, not as a B I R, but just so Kevin can have his right staff in the room. But if, and then if he thinks it needs a B I R, then he can do it that way. But to avoid all the ledge confusion of I R, B I Rs, let's try to get it done in person. All right, see you guys on the twenty-fourth. Well, I'll see you before that, but.